Good morning. The June 14, 2024 meeting of the Anorondle County Council is now in session. Today, we will wrap up deliberations on the proposed FY25 budget for Anorondle County and vote finally on all of the budget bills. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. I should do that myself. Please stand for the invocation. Good morning. May we listen to one another intently with the purpose of bettering ourselves and our community? May we humbly accept the responsibilities assigned to us? May we carry out each of these responsibilities to the best of our capabilities? And the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda this morning? Seeing none. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, what is the final status of any testimony received on the FY25 budget through the online testimony tool?
Madam Chair, we received 27 pieces of testimony that were shared with the council, added to the record, and posted on the website.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 33-24.
Bill 3324, An Ordnance Concerning Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance of Anorondle County.
Thank you. We will now vote on the county executive supplemental amendments to the budget. As a reminder, there have been three actions. There was a May 1 bill proposal, a June 10 proposal of amendments, and a June 11 supplemental proposal. For the folks at home, everything is posted on our website. Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. This is a great bill. I think you should vote for it. There are supplemental amendments we introduced earlier this week. Those are fantastic amendments. They've been vetted, I believe, by the auditor, and you have her team's analysis. We would urge the expeditious adoption of those amendments.
Are there any questions at this time from my colleagues? Seeing none. There are 38 supplemental amendments. May I have a motion to vote on Amendments Number 61 through 98 as a block?
Rodbein, so moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to vote on Amendments Number 61 through 98 as a block.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbein.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to vote on Amendments 61 through 98 as a block has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendments Number 61 through 98.
Amendment Number 61. This amendment increases the appropriation for the chief administrative officer by $540,000, which is the net effect of decreasing contractual services by $50,000 based on the expenditure history and increasing grants, contributions, and other by $590,000 to provide a $500,000 grant for the New Village Academy and $90,000 of a one-time funding to continue the Jovinus Art... I apologize, Artistas program at Maryland Hall. Amendment Number 62. This amendment increases grants, contributions, and other by $50,000 for a port security grant match. Amendment Number 63. This amendment increases contractual services by $20,000 for mass notifications. Amendment Number 64. This amendment increases business and travel in the legislative branch by $35,000 for increased travel and training. Amendment Number 65. This amendment increases personal services by $19,100 for pay scale adjustment for police captains. Amendment Number 66. This amendment increases the county contribution to the Anorondle County Public Library by $65,900 for a collection development specialist position. Amendment Number 67. This amendment increases grants, contributions, and other in the community development fund by $105,900 to appropriate additional grant revenue. Amendment Number 68. This amendment increases the appropriation in the Grant Special Revenue Fund by $1,531,100 to add new grant funding for the Chief Administrative Officer, Office of the County Executive, Department of Aging and Fire Department. This amendment also realigns the appropriation in the Grant Special Revenue Fund for the Chief Administrative Officer to allocate a grant award to the correct bureau, realigns a grant appropriation for the capital budget to the operating budget for the Police Department, and makes technical corrections to Exhibit C. Amendment Number 69. This amendment increases grants, contributions, and other in the reforestation fund by $818,100, of which $329,200 is for capital project C 531200, reforestation program land acquisition, and the remainder is for other reforestation efforts. Amendment Number 70. This amendment reclassifies one senior legislative analyst position to an assistant county auditor position in the legislative branch. Amendment Number 71. This amendment reduces Board of Education Administration by $110,800, mid-level administration $226,100, textbooks and classroom supplies $7,000, other instructional costs $35,100, pupil services $29,900, people transportation $278,000, operation of plant $410,000, and fixed charges $88,300, and increases to instructional salaries and wages $904,300, and special education $382,900. These changes reflect reductions associated with the delayed opening of the New Village Academy Public Charter School, $340,400, and the annual liabilities contribution to the self-insurance fund, $130,000, and increases to pay teachers for lost planning time when covering classes due to absenteeism, $2,162,100. Restore eight full-time equivalent teaching positions to address elementary school class sizes that may exceed 30 students, $667,200. Support pre-kindergarten private provider programs, $41,000. Implement virtual tutoring and homework help programs after school hours, $300,000, and pre-kindergarten private provider programs as a result of an increase in state funding, $102,000. Amendment Number 72. Capital budget. This amendment reduces FY25 other federal grant for the Information Technology Enhancement Project by $963,000. This grant is being moved to the Police Department's operating budget for administrative purposes. Amendment Number 73. Capital budget. This amendment increases FY25 general county bonds for the county facilities and system upgrades project by $954,000, and FY25 Pago by $46,000. Amendment Number 74. Capital budget. This amendment reduces FY25 general county bonds for the Odenton Mark Project by $75,000 and increases FY25 Tax Increment Fund, TIF, by $75,000. Amendment Number 75. Capital budget. This amendment increases FY25 Pago for the Parking Garages Repair and Renovation Project by a net of $386,000. Amendment Number 76. Prior approved. This amendment reduces prior-approved parking garage funds by $400,000 for the Parking Garages Repair and Renovation Project. Amendment Number 77. Prior council approved. Reduces prior-approved reforestation forest conservation funding by $371,300. Amendment Number 78. Capital budget. This amendment increases FY25 other fed grants by $1,320,000 for the School Bus Replacement Project. Amendment Number 79. Capital budget. This amendment adds FY25 general county bonds in the amount of $5,834,000 for capital project E 572500 Quarterfield Elementary School to correct the designation of prior-approved funds. Amendment Number 80. Prior council approved. This amendment decreases FY24 general fund Pago for capital project E 572500 Quarterfield Elementary School by $5,834,000 to correct the designation of prior-approved funds. Amendment Number 81. Capital budget. This amendment reduces FY25 general county bonds by $488,000 and increases FY25 public safety impact fee by $488,000 for the Joint 911 Public Safety Center capital project. Amendment Number 82. Capital budget. This amendment increases FY25 District 4 Highway Impact Fees by $2,383,000, as already reflected in the capital budget book. Amendment Number 83. Prior council approved. This amendment decreases prior-approved bonds by $2,383,000 as already reflected in the capital budget book, and prior-approved District 4 Highway Impact Fees by $316,000 for capital project H 371200 Town Center to Reese Road to correct the designation of prior-approved funds. Amendment Number 84. Capital budget. This amendment increases FY25 general county bonds by $2,500,000 for the Road Reservicing Capital Project. Amendment Number 85. Capital budget. This amendment increases FY25 Pago by $1,500,000 for the Road Reconstruction Capital Project. Amendment Number 86. Capital budget. This amendment increases FY25 general county bonds by $20,000 for the Guard Rail Capital Project. Amendment Number 87. Prior council approved. This amendment reduces prior-approved Tax Increment Fund, TIF, by $75,000 for the Monterey Avenue Sidewalk Improvement Capital Project. Amendment Number 88. Capital budget. This amendment reduces FY25 general county bonds by $500,000 and increases District 3 Highway Impact Fees by $500,000 for the Jumpers Hole Road Improvements Capital Project. Amendment Number 89. Capital budget. This amendment increases FY25 general county bonds by $2,754,000, and FY25 other federal grants by $500,000, and FY25 District 5 Highway Impact Fees by $300,000 for capital project H 575700 Maryland 214 and Lock Haven Road. Amendment Number 90. Prior council approval. This amendment supersedes Amendment 24 and decreases prior-approved miscellaneous funds by $3,554,000 for capital project H 575700 Maryland 214 and Lock Haven Road. Amendment Number 91. Capital budget. This amendment reduces FY25 District 1 Highway Impact Fees by $143,000 for the Old Mill Middle School Offsite Improvement Capital Project. Amendment Number 92. Capital program. This amendment adds an FY25 appropriation of $1,200,000 in general county bonds for project H 590400 Reva Road Shared Use Path to move the project forward. Amendment Number 93. Prior approved. This amendment reduces funding plan for the Reva Road Shared Use Path Capital Project in FY28 through FY30, moves funding forward to FY27 and FY28, and reduces the project total by $761,000. Specifically, in FY27, increases general county bonds by $430,000 and other state grants by $1 million. In FY28, reduces general county bonds by $1,041,000. FY29, reduces general county bonds by $430,000. And in FY30, reduces general county bonds by $8,415,000. Amendment Number 94. Prior council approved. This amendment modifies the reduction of prior-approved solid waste bonds from $3,489,000 to $2,758,000 for the MLF Subsell 9.3 Design Construction Project. Amendment Number 95. Capital budget. This amendment increases FY25 Pago by $2 million for the Park Renovation Capital Project. Amendment Number 96. Capital budget. This amendment increases FY25 Pago by $1,535,000 for the Broadneck Peninsula Trail Capital Project. Amendment Number 97. Prior approved. This amendment modifies the reduction to prior-approved funds for the FY23 Judging Program Capital Project. In total, prior-approved general county bonds are reduced by $205,000, and prior-approved MD Waterway Improvement Funds are reduced by $66,000. And Amendment Number 98. Capital budget. This amendment increases FY25 wastewater bonds by $117,600 for the Central Sanitation Facility Capital Project.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Well done. Mr. Trumbauer, these are administration amendments. Did you want to comment briefly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. As advertised, that were just read, these do those things, and as I mentioned before, they've been vetted, and you all have a summary from the auditor that verifies that. I will note, Pen, if the council chooses to adopt all of these, we will have two final balancing amendments. I don't believe there would be a need to recess if you adopt these supplemental amendments because we've pre-prepared those if these were to pass.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt Amendments 61 through 98?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Rodbein?
Oh. Okay.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendments Number 61 through 98.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbein.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendments Number 61 through 98 to Bill 3324 have been adopted.
Okay. We will wait for a moment to get Amendments 99 and 100.
Madam Chair, if it pleases, I can explain what those amendments do ahead of time so we can fill some of that space?
Sure.
Great. So you'll see two amendments. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer, you'll see two amendments. One is the final balancing for Pago. The second one is the final balancing for impact fees. Again, these were worked out ahead of time, presuming that these would be the right amounts if the council were to pass the block that you just adopted. So I think it should be a straight, fairly straightforward manner to adopt these final balancing amendments to true everything up, and then the final budget bill will be ready for your final vote. It's a well-oiled machine over here.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 99.
Amendment Number 99. This amendment decreases Pago by $600,000.
Mr. Trumbauer, you've already spoken on this amendment?
Yes, I concur with the reading of it just now.
Is there a motion to adopt Amendment Number 99?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion from my colleagues about Amendment Number 99? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 99.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbein.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 99 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 100.
Amendment Number 100. This amendment increases the amounts appropriated by $2,675,000 from the Impact Fee Fund to correspond with the impact fee amounts shown as revenue in the capital project fund.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer, yes. This is the final reconciliation of the impact fees. I will say, this was a fairly significant amount of effort to do all this, so thanks to the folks on the budget team and the auditor team that worked through this. It's much more complex than the one you just voted on, but it is accurate and true, so I urge your adoption.
A motion to adopt Amendment Number 100.
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion on Amendment Number 100? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 100.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbein.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 100 has been adopted.
Okay, that concludes all of our amendments for Bill Number 33-24. Madam Secretary, you want to read Bill Number 33-24?
Bill Number 3324, An Ordnance Concerning Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance of Anorondle County.
Is there any further discussion on Bill 33-24? Mr. Smith?
Oh.
Mr. Trumbauer? Good? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 33-24.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
I'm going to take a moment before my vote. Through the budget deliberations, I keep going back to comments from the administration during the District 5 Budget Town Hall. "We have some real challenges," is what was said. "It's not going to be an easy budget to put together." Then during the budget address on May 1, the comment that "there is a storm of fiscal pressures facing county government." When comments like these are made behind closed doors in families across the county, families don't increase their budget, they cut their budget. It isn't easy, but it is necessary to get through harder financial years. These are the people we are asking to pay more money, and people don't want to pay more money. An individual with an income of over $50,000 or a household dual income of over $75,000, in my opinion, that's not the middle at all. Everyone is paying more to get through daily life. I hear it everywhere I go. I live it having a family of my own. This council heard it from folks coming out to testify during a rezoning case last week for Shirleyville. I heard it last night at a community meeting. We can't take another year of tax increases. It's too much. No more tax increases. Yet this budget is an 8% increase in spending, 3% increase over last year's expenditures. Government isn't doing what families across this county are doing, making really tough decisions. I believe that we could have a budget in front of us that invests in essential government functions, especially public safety, our police, fire, sheriff, and detention agencies, and in our education system. It would have meant a few more no's for this year in other areas, with the hopes to reinstate in the future. There is a way to create a budget that doesn't increase the burden on citizens. The will is what is lacking. It's a fundamental difference of opinion on how to bake the budget from the very beginning. The totality of this budget is too much for me to, in good conscience, put on the families who are already feeling the financial strain of everyday costs. In closing, I want to share three quotes from emails I received on this budget. From two retired Anorondle County teachers, "We can barely afford to pay our current income and property taxes. If you continue to raise them, we will need to move out of the county." Another writes, "As my wife and I get closer to the end of our work careers and look to transition to retirement, these yearly significant cost increases to income and property taxes will almost certainly force us to move from Maryland and relocate into a less expensive area. I know I'm not alone in this case, as several others have left the county to less expensive areas to live." And finally, a comment on income taxes in particular. "Every time a rate goes up, it means that government is taking a larger slice of the taxpayer's earning pie. When government keeps taking a larger slice, it means that something else that taxpayer may have needed to spend money on will be squeezed or even crowded out. Good county fiscal management should be able to occur by using the larger revenues that necessarily result from overall year-to-year increases in taxpayer incomes, even at the same rate as prevailed in the previous year. That's what taxpayers have to do: live within their means." Nay.
Ms. Rodbein?
Thank you. On that note, I will also take a moment to explain my vote. I am very impressed that when, you know, we've had to be a little bit tighter with our budget due to decreased funding from the state, we were able to meet the vast majority of the county's priorities with very modest. And I want to put these tax increases in context. For a couple earning $150,000, the increase is $8 a month. For an individual earning $60,000, the increase is $1.08 a month. The real estate tax increase is even smaller. A $500,000 house will have an additional $15 a year. As for the fee increases, the costs of the services provided by our offices have increased, but yet these fees had not been updated in over a decade, and they are now much more in line with the actual costs of the services are provided. I think these very, very modest increases are well worth the results that we will get by chipping away at our teacher shortage, our police officer shortage, our detention officer shortage, our public employee shortage in general. When I took office, and many of the folks here took office in 2018, we had a $2 billion backlog of school construction, and we've made good progress. And what got us there was continuous underinvestment in county because of unnecessarily low taxes. We are still the lowest in the region for both property taxes and income taxes, and I'm proud to say, with all of the things that we are able to accomplish with this very modest increase, I vote yea.
Ms. Ledbetter?
I will also take a moment before my vote. There are a lot of good things in this budget, but it will be no surprise to anyone that I remain concerned about the ever-expanding growth of our county's budget. This proposed budget outpaces personal income growth of county residents, and the capital budget is growing faster than the economy. And to pay for this ever-increasing budget, we are being asked to raise taxes again. I have heard from the citizens who live in my district and even around the county about the challenges and the hardships they're facing. The challenges paying for ever-increasing food prices, gas in their vehicles, electricity at home, shocking increases to their property taxes fueled by ever-rising property values. Increasing our county's budget and funding it by increasing taxes at this time, it doesn't feel right in my conscience, and it doesn't feel responsible. And so, for me, right now, I'm a nay on today's budget. Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
So I echo a lot of the sentiments that my colleagues have mentioned already, but I would just add this. I recognize that maybe it looks in a vacuum, like these increases are relatively small, but when you combine them with the more taxes and the more fees that are coming in at the state level from the governor and what the legislature has passed, those add up, and those are having real impacts. I was just with some folks from BGE this week looking at the expansion of a substation where they're going to have to cut down a lot of forest in my district, close to 60 acres, it looks like, because they are decommissioning one of our power plants that is in my district that is a clean, burning coal plant. And the reason that they're decommissioning it is because of an agreement reached with the Sierra Club and the producer, and they've decided to decommission that. So now BGE, who is the transmission line provider, has to figure out a way to get power from Pennsylvania down to Maryland so that most of central Maryland doesn't find itself without sufficient power. And that is going to come in the form, that being paid for, a lot of those developments by fees that are going now be passed on to ratepayers that have been approved in the General Assembly's budget. So we can talk about this is a small hit here in the county, but that does not mitigate on the additional costs that our taxpayers are having to pay across the board. So with all that, and with the continued growth of this budget just being disproportionate to the growth of personal income, I vote no.
Ms. Pickard?
I will be voting for public safety, for education, for improvements to our roads, to general infrastructure in the county. So it's an aye for me. It's a 4-3 vote, which gets it done, but it's disappointing. So maybe we can concentrate the investment in roads that we just did through supplemental in four districts.
That said, we have formed the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 3324 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 34-24.
Bill Number 3424, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Special Community Benefit Districts, Shore Erosion Control Districts, and Water Waste Improvement Districts.
Is there any discussion, Mr. Trumbauer, on 3424?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this bill, and actually the subsequent bills, are relating to tax levies for various special districts. So I'll just make one series of comments for all of them, but these are worked out with Munichap to determine the correct rates, and then those are put in the bill. So I would urge your support of this one, and then I believe the next bills through Bill 42 all deal with special tax districts. So I won't comment on them individually if it pleases the chair.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 34-24.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbein.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 3424 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 35-24.
Bill Number 3524, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Arrendal Gateway Special Taxing District.
Any discussion of my colleagues? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 35-24.
Ms. Hummer. Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbein.[1757.61] Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 3524 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 36-24.
Bill Number 3624, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Arrendal Mills Special Taxing District.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 36-24.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 3624 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 37-24.
Bill Number 3724, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Dorchester Special Taxing District.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 37-24.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 3724 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 38-24.
Bill Number 3824, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Farmington Village Special Taxing District.
Any discussion of my colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 38-24.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 3824 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 39-24.
Bill Number 3924, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, National Business Park Special Taxing District.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 39-24.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 3924 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 40-24.
Bill Number 4024, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, National Business Park North Special Taxing District.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 40-24.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 4024 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 41-24.
Bill Number 4124, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Two Rivers Special Taxing District.
Is there any discussion of my colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 41-24.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 4124 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 42-24.
Bill Number 4224, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Village South at Wah Chapel Special Taxing District.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 42-24.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer? I mean, sorry, excuse me, Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 4224 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 43-24.
Bill Number 4324, An Ordnance Concerning Fee for Switch Local Exchange Access Service, CMRS, and Other 911 Accessible Service.
Mr. Trumpauer, this is an administration bill. Would you like to comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this, Chris Trumeyer, Budget Officer, this is a revenue bill. You remember, when we presented the budget, we walked through, the county puts a surcharge, as all counties do, on the mobile phone bills for, to support 911 services. Ours is the lowest in the state at 75 cents, so our proposal is to go to $1, which would put us closer to the average of what other counties charge. And these funds are demonstrated to be proportional to what the police department and others spend on 911 services. So we did a little bit of a look at last year of the expenses, and saw that we were more than justified to do this modest increase of our 911 fee. So we'd urge your adoption.
Any discussion from my colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 43-24.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 4324 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 44-24 as amended.
Bill Number 4424, An Ordnance Concerning Construction Code, Department of Inspections and Permits Fees.
Mr. Trumpauer, this is the administration's bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumeyer, Budget Officer, we've had a fair amount of discussion about this bill, but it's a new fee schedule for IMP permits fees, and we removed the indexing provision and required the department to submit every two years an updated recommendation of what they think the fee should be, but obviously that does not change the fees, it just sends you all a report and the county executive a report at that time. So we would urge your adoption of this.
Is there any discussion from my colleagues about Bill 44-24 as amended? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 44-24 as amended.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 4424 as amended has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 45-24.
Bill Number 4524, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works Utilities, Metered Water and Wastewater Charges.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumeyer, Budget Officer, as Madam Administrator read, this is the Water and Wastewater Fee Bill, so we discussed this during the budget process, and this would adopt the new rates.
Is there any discussion of my colleagues on Bill 45-24? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 45-24.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 4524 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 46-24.
Bill Number 4624, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works Solid Waste Collection, Solid Waste Service Charge, Solid Waste Landfill and Facility Delivery Fees.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumeyer, Budget Officer, this sets the rates for people to pick up our trash, so we would urge your favorable adoption.
Is there any discussion of my colleagues? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 46-24.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven, or, sorry, excuse me, four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 4624 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 47-24.
Bill Number 4724, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget Income Tax.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumeyer, Budget Officer, this sets the new income tax rates for tax year '25, and as we discussed during the budget process, it keeps the rates the same for those earning less than $50,000 on the single filers, $75,000 on the joint filers, and it also keeps the high-income filers rate the same, but it does have a modest increase in that middle tier. So this is the revenue that's built into the budget that was just passed a few moments ago, so we would urge the council's adoption.
My colleagues at this time on Bill 47-24. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 47-24.